...will come to our man, Sir Paul Clark.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Here.
Councilwoman Questa.
Here.
Councilwoman Jacobs. Councilwoman Grover.
Here.
Councilwoman Keenan. Here. Councilwoman Sedano. Here. Councilwoman Vaughn.
Here.
Councilwoman Nasa.
Here.
President Gonzalez.
Here. Please stand for your prayer and pledge allegiance to the dead by Councilwoman Keenan.
Oh my God, let's do a hymn of prayer for our community. May strong sense of justice be served like under all we get it. Above all, may we seek out your holy will. Give us the strength to follow it regardless of all human considerations.
Let there be reason to the life of United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the distinct justice for all.
This is a written agreement of the City Council incorporated in the annual meetings notice of 2012, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the votes board on December 27, 2012, and sent to the Star Ledger and Home Post Tribune in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Rights Law of New Jersey. Before we move into the public speaking, Councilwoman Perkins Dusty has a presentation to like.
Thank you, my fellow colleagues, Councilman Manny Grover to join me. Since the Elizabeth Patterson Hall is in our business for communion.
Best field of interest.
Mr. President and colleagues, we are here this evening with a group of distinguished young people who is under the leadership of the Pop Warner Elizabeth Patterson, and they are the Junior Remidget Team. They have been very successful over the last several weeks, winning football games around the sea, through the storm, the day after the storm, or the day before the storm. Their first game was played on, championship game was played on November 4th, and that was just hours before Hurricane Sandy came in, and they won that game. And their following game, which they won, was played on the following Sunday, and we had to stay in New York to play that game, and they were able to win that game. And then they came back on Saturday here in Union County and played a game in Roselle, which was totally miraculous, because they were down 20-0 after half, and they came back to win 26-24. So I'm asking for the coach, Coach Sean McLean, and his coaching staff, the president of Pop Warner Sports, and all the team, the team to come up, the young people. And I would like to see that little girl, the young lady, in the midst of all this team, the young lady. Yeah, the young lady. And I know what it's like being the only young lady on the team. So I truly applaud her, and you should see her play. And you might love it, you can see when she plays, when she's out there making her tackle. She really put the opponents to shame, you know. But I truly want to take time to applaud them. They are, they are two games away of going to Florida and playing in the national, playing for the national championship. So their champions are ready to meet by what they have gone through. They have been impacted just like everybody else by Hurricane Sandy, by the hurricanes. Their families would do have power, but they still practice and they still play with such character and with such heart. You know, it really, it really says a lot about the human spirit. And if you give children a chance to succeed, they will and they can succeed. Not only in football, but they also do very well in academics. Coach Sean is a real component of academics. You want to see their progress reports, you want to make sure they do well and soon. So it's just not about football, it's about building character in young people, it's about building leadership. So at this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to my colleague Manny Grover. We have commendations for them tonight, and all of their names are excellent commendations. And mom, and dad, and all those who support this team. This is a legal document, and it will be down in history here in City Hall. And this is the city law in the records, it would read tonight on November 13 that we, the City Council, commend them on the hard work they did during, and we continue and wish them much success. I'd be here for Manny, and I'd be here for President Torres, Coach Sean, and then the team captain. Now, there's really no team captain, because they're all leaders in their own right. But you are over here for Messiah, is that correct? Okay, Messiah, you're going to speak for the team, right? Okay, so without further ado, Councilwoman Grover.
I knew Messiah, he was playing basketball on our, who says down in the downtown, remember a few years back? He's come up to a big part, but a very important team in our city. You guys have achieved something that's not easy to do, and that is to be an official North Jersey Pop Warner champion. I know you guys are just a couple steps away from going to nationals. I do want to take the opportunity to congratulate Coach Sean and his coaching staff, board, everybody else. When I'm out there on the field, I can tell you, I'm the coach of Messiah team. I know how much dedication, how much time out of our schedules as coaches that we dedicate for the respect of the teams. And I can tell you, I see Sean out there drilling these guys. And obviously, as you all know, all that hard work pays off in the end. Sometimes you may say, "Why is Coach Four says to do?" Now, why? Because this is what you're why. Because whatever you want to achieve something in life, it takes a lot of hard work. Alright, so I glad my guys are part of it, glad your experiences in your life at an early age, and take this experience going forward in everything you guys in life. And I'm going to tell you this, if you guys win another couple of games, we're going to have a nice good time down in the waterfront in our new field, here in New Jersey.
How you guys doing? My name is Pop Warner Sports, I'm the president of Elizabeth Patterson. This is an honor for me tonight. Four years ago, I had my hands and goals for this organization. Any award we win over the past, the last 40 years, nothing compares to this. These kids have been remembering this as long as they live. No trophies on top of this. I mean, these are this coaching staff, they put their blood swipe up here to these kids. They dedicate their time, they wait for their families. And this is the result, this is the end result. I would like to thank Councilwoman Patricia Perkins. This is a truly a blessing. Thank you, Manny Grover, who's the City Council, thank you also. I just have one request, at the next game, please keep Councilwoman off the field. Because we have a nickname for our field, we call it Pat and Mark. She swears she knows their name. But I'm going to turn it over, this is Sean McLean, Sean McLean, he's the man that made us all proud.
First of all, I want to thank everybody, thank the City of Elizabeth, Mary, for having such a wonderful event to open up to our wonderful kids, especially the youth. What I would like to do, I would like everybody, everybody to stand up for a second. Everybody stand up a second please. Everybody stand up please. Get my kids to play around, my bros. I just want to say one thing, but we were down 40-0. And it was about to go into the fourth quarter, everybody was looking at me. I was like, "Why is everybody looking at me?" And everyone was like, "Play your game." Let me tell you, I told those kids that they believe in themselves, and they get their focus, and focus on the game plan that we set ahead, and my wonderful coaches board. I changed seven, and others out, and I went and get the league, and they told me this. Them guys standing there before, before, and those kids came up, and they put 26 financial points. Let me tell you something, they'll win this regardless of whatever happens in the tournament. You said my word. I want to thank everybody, everybody that's been playing out, that's supported, and how they're working to do. You know, we had the champions, we had all the champions, we had everything. You know, we got everything we wanted. So we just want to work hard, we want to bring over the championship. Let me tell you something, not only is it what you're going to feel, every kid, y'all want to act a different way. They can't play for me, and that's how I'm doing here in New Jersey.
Hey guys, I'm going to sign this. I would like to thank the coaches and the players, family, the hearts and, family, the office and coordinators, and our coaches staff, and I'm going to come back and make sure it's a championship.
We got two sets of twins, I just called them twins. Okay, the first person I'd like to go off with, all the person, I guess they gave me the name of the hit man. Ewan Nixon, number three. Congratulations, Ewan. Good job, good job. Okay, the next person I'd like to hire is, let me get the name. That's still my name? Okay, I got this one. The next person, Jared Jennings. This is Jared, second time. The next person, I believe this is first year playing, Daniel Oren. The next person, David Ramirez. Next, Jalen Hill. This kid right here, he's a two-way starter, great job, great job. This next young man, Cameron Rodriguez. He's a winner, I want to check him more than you. The next kid, Lawan Ayres. Rafael Uvila. Next kid, this kid is the new Michael Fane. Fredo Lozada. This kid, he must be a son, my nephew, Ariel McLean. This kid, I had to have a meeting with his mother before he was playing, to Phil Curry. Congratulations. This next person, Grandis King over here, he was really assaulted. Her name is Jamara O'Beam. Is that it? Okay. This next guy, DT Hadee Rocklet. This kid right here, at the beginning, we didn't know what was going to happen. This guy aims to be a mean record machine, to beat, beat. Got to thank him. It's hard for me to get them confused, even though they're twins, but this young man, Jamal May. This kid is a hardworking young man, Amir Alri. Okay, the next person, Serabu Abdu. The next gentleman, who came to his own last game, put a big hit to tackle, Brian Abru. Then I go to get rid of, no, this is brother. This next young man, Najee Abdu Malik. Trust me, I still believe in you. I still love you. I just say twins, I get lucky. This next young man, I wonder, let me say, Terrell Dustin. You got to say it for him, you got to say it for him. This young man, he started the comeback. And he's been doing this at least six or seven times on the game, picked six for a touchdown, Messiah O'Beam. Okay, and assistant coach, Patricia Perkins, I got that. We're going to take a little picture, and this trophy right here, a coach's trophy.
Will you get him back?
We'll get him back to that. You'll look like a kid.
So what did we get him for?
M is cheap.
I yell if I want Ewan.
I bet enough, break them, knock them.
You gotta get him back. You gotta get him back.
Not even taking anybody.
You got to fit something in there. Y'all can leave now, get out of here.
...and any taxpayer resident wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time. This, we'll take a second, something. Never mind until they clear the board.
I believe the first woman of Asian descent was the night that we were in City Hall. I want to congratulate those three, and hopefully you can move ahead and make sure that education is a, obviously, the first thing that all the creation is, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other taxpayer resident wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time. Who say you may have some reference?
David Johnson, this is off the apples. I would like to congratulate that team too, what a great team. It's a great, absolutely. Like I said, three stages, that's all. Sure, we may involve to the council members and all those who are related. My comments, this is a very quick show to go. My comments are not about the hundreds of city workers who honorably turned out in a recent emergency, but how they are trained. My comments are not about the city workers' motivation, or their great commitment to doing their job and how they are right there. And my comments are not about the city itself, but the appreciation that in light of a recent emergency that it has today, the rare opportunity to change itself radically and redirect itself in a better and more productive way, so that in future emergencies, the public's and with them, the city's interests will be better served. I have nothing to mind but admiration of the city workers who worked so tirelessly and hard during the recent emergency, but as the city, excuse me, but as the city's administration reflects on that crisis, and which practices, policies, and decisions were best suited and those that have committed change, I tell the city respectfully tonight that there are many citizens of this city with the skill, the knowledge, and the building experience, who with real encouragement would come forward in the future to offer their ideas, suggestions, and solutions as these policies are reevaluated and how to implement future, should be further policy in the future. I'm finishing. I therefore urge the city administration to publicly tonight make an invitation to those of the city, and let me be one of those, and any of my neighbors who come forward to help in the future.
Thanks, if you have any specific ideas, please, for your show.
Yeah, I know where to go. And I just want to say, it was Rob Pop, who just kind of popped back like most of you all, and it was hard, and I have nothing, a criticism, admiration, just that, I know where to go.
Thank you, sir. Any other taxpayer resident wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time.
I hope everyone's power was on, everybody got the storm, and families are bright. It was tough on everybody. But once again, we're here concerning the situation that we're facing. You could imagine, we had it hard, and how hard it was for you, and the complaints we were giving you before the hurricane came, you could imagine what those residents made of it. All, nothing has changed far from when we were in the, yeah, we had permanent houses somewhere else. Those buildings are. But eventually, power came on after two weeks. The motivation was good for them people to have, had wait two weeks before they got their lights on. Before CIA and other parts sent massive electricians in, engineers in, lights in the right area. All, all the lights in the community went on. Everybody was suffering in the community. Councilman St. David, he didn't get there, he didn't get his lights on, until these engineers came around here and turned on both the lights. I just want to make mention of that. Why do we have to do things so long? Why do we have to be political people? Now, Councilman Jacobs, you said, uh, last time, we were here. We should take our fight to avoid education. Why, why should we take our fight to avoid education? Because you got a problem with, my feeling, huh? He did too long when you worked for him or something? And you do go and see avoiding education with injustice being done to our children. Don't tell us where we need to go, we know where we need to go. And Councilman Nasa, you said, "I've been here, what, I've listened to the hand." I wouldn't give a damn if I'd been here two minutes. Anywhere I see injustice being done to that, my people, I'll be here. Well, I lived there, but now I miss one other thing. I was born here in Norfolk Church. Where was you born, how did you come to this country? On a bomb attack, or something? Were you born here, huh, in this country, huh? If you have a choice about coming here, don't ever talk to us like that again.
Any other taxpayer resident wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time.
Good evening, my name is Sunshine, I'm excited for being here this afternoon. My concern is, it's not good, my concern is, my concern about my mom. She visited 230 Park Road. The elevator is out, it's been out for months. My mom, she has it hard, she works on her job for about eight hours, she stands up, and she's a tough. And my thing is, she had to come home from work and woke up to stairs because of the elevator, because the fire department was in the elevator. Now, you have an elevator in that building, it's a lot of people that's citizens that lives in that building. And it's not fair, they have to walk up and down the stairs in that building. Now, something is being done for the people that lives in it, it's not fair. Now, I already saw CIA's, if something happens to my mom because she's walking up and down the stairs, and because she has to remember anything placed in her car, and like I said, her heart is real deep. Now, if something happens to her because she had to walk up and down the stairs, it's going to be a big problem. And I mean, it's going to be a real big problem, and it's not right. Something is being done, if they can't reach the elevator, they try to place it somewhere, and I walk up and down the stairs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll make sure that we send it over to the appropriate city department so they can follow up on that.
Yeah, because all this, they don't have no information, all the spiders on one, they don't go nothing. So something is being done because before I would come up and walk up and down the stairs.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other taxpayer resident wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time.
A Gina Fitz, former resident of 400th Avenue, living in 220 Park Road. My concern is, like the young lady just sat down and said the elevator was out. I looked into 20, the elevator been out. Just for luck situations, as far as with the flooding or water, the elevator has been out waiting for a storm. And as I said before at the last meeting, people are suffering. This is not a game, this is not a joke, this is not about political movement. This is about people deserving a decent and safe place to live. This is about the people of Rhode Island being told the truth about Rhode Island. This is about the people of Oakwood being told the truth about Oakwood. Not the truth being hidden from you of Oakwood, okay? Enough is enough. We just went out, as I said before, they had the plans that we were facilitating, that's fine. But we need the truth, it's probably on, which means it's not in by our city, it's not in by our city. How's the daughter, she's probably on. We need to know the dates when each building will be torn down. We need to know when she wants to hump out. We need to know if we're gonna be the first to have a house. And when we're vulnerable, we need to know the facts. Fantasy is made what we want, but reality is what they need. Reality is what we need. We don't need all the fool, we don't need all this riffraffing that tried to block us off. It was shit out of the blue. What we want is a deep and profound place to live, to raise our children. That's what we need, and that's what we want. I see nobody for arguments, don't nobody can come and visit and run it back with the city council. Y'all got y'all trying to do, and if we as citizens and residents have our jobs to come up here and let our voice be heard. And it's something wrong with that. People want to be frustrated, they want to be activated, and it's people's time. What for do we explain people to do? And I believe everybody's doing a good job by telling the thing that was heard. And I think all of my time is for all that is going to put people of Oakwood, because everybody can't stay, and everybody ain't gonna stay and talk. But I believe you can tell, I will not fall for anything. And I'm staying strong, and the people need the truth. And if you can assist us, I'm on policy, I'm gonna act on procedure, do action on the bull and the pressure. The buildings are messed up, and the other things, and everything on that policy, y'all have to see to do, to have to do, to show that. And it's simple, you do what you need to do for the people. Thank you, and you all have a good night.
Just wanted to present to the public to know that I recently sent another letter out to CIS, asking them to come back to this council so we can ask themselves those very same questions. Many of the questions that you asked earlier tonight, but on previous pages, uh, hoping that they will come back and answer some of those questions for us as well. Uh, in addition to that, so you know, I also requested from the administration that they assign an individual specifically to open, to deal with all the issues of open, to expedite the complaints and repairs, to ensure that there's some improvement that takes place as well. Uh, it'll be a little easier for us also to be able to go to one person and then ask them what's going on and be able to follow with that versus having to go to different people in different departments in that as well. In addition, I'm still waiting for the administration, I requested the administration to send us, uh, the directors of the city to come here to the meeting so they can also answer some questions. I'm still waiting for that response as well. Any other taxpayer resident who should address City Council, you may do so at this time.
Can you give one, my name is Fiona Clapp. I'm a resident of one, you know, Virginia Avenue. A new tenant at two thirty Park Road in apartment two H. And my vision still is, and I still echo it, why I can't move from point A to point B under the same hood, low income that I had to be with the apartment? If I'm gonna be in Oakwood Plaza and it's making me sick? And I just, I just want to just know that because I've been sitting here for weeks and months at a time, all these meetings I've been going to, and I still haven't got that question answered yet.
And I know that, and you will not hear, but I seen the housing authority was here, and they answered that question, that it's a federal housing project, it's not owned and managed by the city at all, and something is probably on. Uh, they would have to request to the federal housing administration to be able to do that. And from what they shared with us, they have an option to opt out, and it was in April of next year. Uh, so we encourage the residents to contact CIS and ask them to opt out to this way that will give you, if you have those, it will give you the ability then to be able to move out. Any other taxpayer resident who should address City Council, you may do so at this time? Once again, any other resident taxpayer who should address City Council, you may do so at this time? Good evening.
My name is Xavier Austin, I'm just a question about, I'm just a question. I've listened to a lot of my tenants complaining, and your complaints concerning Oakwood Plaza. I have talked to, um, Karen off, and CIS continue to have meetings with the tenants of Oakwood Plaza. They had promised us that we would have a meeting if they could get a select amount of residents that is a tenant association. There is a small room. CIS has not had it with us. Called to see if we could schedule another meeting. They have not returned any of my calls. We're trying to reach out to CIS, they're not trying to reach out with us. Uh, I feel as though it's an injustice that we have to come to the council to get you to get to move CIS. And the very last meeting that we had with them in August, this is now November. They said it was not the council that stirred it up to have this meeting with us, but I couldn't believe that it was. So again, I'm asking that perhaps people fired under Chris Foggio or Foggio, that we can have a meeting, we can, so that tenants can know that the communication is still going on as it runs, but...
So they haven't had any more meetings with us right this time?
No, because what I gotta say, this is now November. The last meeting we had was in August. September came, there was no meeting. I just called to say, there are minutes, they said that they would have minutes for the, the people that would add this selected associate's, uh, tenant meeting. Did not receive a copy of the minutes, did not receive a letter, did not receive anything. Also, I have spoken with the, uh, people in the maintenance department who are working diligently for the tenant of Oakwood Plaza, situation and circumstances. There was an elevator person that had to work with the elevator over at three eighty Irvington Avenue at two hundred Parker Road. I questioned him about the other two buildings. He shook his head, he said, there is nothing that can be done because they are broken. So evidently, there needs to be new elevators placed in these buildings. Then my next question is, where these elevators are gonna come from? Because then CIS would say, we haven't got money from this place, this place, we have to do this and that. So many proceedings, while these proceedings are going on, we have scenes are going up and down the stairs. While the maintenance people were handing out food, blankets, and clothing to the tenants, they needed to know those people that needed it the most. I walked from the first floor to the fifth floor to get the names, yeah, to make sure that these tenants were aware of what was going on in Oakwood Plaza. That's not an easy task to do. I'm pretty good at the health, but I can imagine some of the seniors who live on the fifth floor. Those people who moved over from Irvington Avenue to Parker Road, the only open apartment available, the fourth or the third floor, that is an injustice to these people. Also, when this movement is going on, I understand that according to, uh, there's a certain amount of money that, um, that were fair market rights or whatever. Some of these people had to look for their own apartments because there was nothing available over at Parker Road. There was nothing available, and it was a lack of bliss that they handed out to these tenants. So they had to look for their own apartments, and many of the apartments in this neighborhood are even above the so-called fair market rent. It's an injustice that's being done with the tenants here. Holidays are coming around, you have Hurricane Sandy coming about. I have so many complaints, I have been glad to bring my little black book. But before I close, one thing that I do have to say, that's the city, um, that's the police department. A good model, they used to have a little cash fund card, protect and serve. I no longer see that capture, it saddens me. During the blackout, I understand it was stretched far and wide, it was what they had to do. But with the city of Elizabeth, the neighborhood, the majority of them retain their lights. There was a small little island that did not have their lights. The middle of Riverside, yard toward, um, uh, Irvington Avenue, uh, up to Remar's Avenue, we did not have lights. To where school twenty-three is located, there is no lights. Up to where Travis Lane is located, there is no lights. I was concerned, I'm going for the tenants, though I could manage the government of Oakwood Plaza. For the state of the state, 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 as far as the surrounding area. Did I see police car?
No.
Did I see multiple unit there?
No.
When I pulled the police department to find out, where was the multiple unit? I was told, oh, the generator is out. Boom, boom, we can use flashlights, we did too. Where is the police car? You couldn't station it out? Oh, he's here right in the traffic. Poor excuses, poor excuses. All I can say, and I'm sorry, I had a friend who used to make this thing. When what lies from the older switch? What side of the line?
Can you say that the association is reorganized again now?
It's not what you would call an official, but they asked if there were some concerned tenants that would come together and meet with them. There were concerned tenants who met with them on the very first meeting. And we're waiting for another meeting. I called to reschedule another meeting. I called, can we make minutes to last meeting? As I say, this is November, I've not seen that yet.
We'll see about getting that to meet with you again. Now, just want to make sure that the city files on two twenty, two thirty, Parker Road, three yards beyond the house as well. Uh, any other taxpayer resident who should address City Council, you may do so at this time?
Hi, I'm, uh, I'm in Kane Basin, five twenty, we question the tenant. First, before I start...
Sorry, she didn't get your name, Max.
Kane Basin, five twenty, we question the resident.
Thank you.
For, I'd like to shout, I'd like to commend Councilor Stone, for the hard work and the dedication that he's up there doing. Helping defeat the residents at Oakwood Plaza for two weeks. Where it wasn't, you know, lights, no nothing. All we had was flashlights and little barbers, I mean, a couple of pits in each building, so they could bring food outside, so the fools who are bad, they can bring it outside, defeat their family, defeat their kids. Where it wasn't nobody from the city, and nobody ever came here, and asked them if they needed shelter with the heat, and they didn't. We just left, we just left them dead. They, they didn't care about that. It wasn't nothing, but they could have a parade on our side of Columbus, they put a column parade on our side of it. And when the parade is over, you got five trucks lighting up the streets for them. But they was lighting up anything for the kids outside. For two, two weeks, that man been there. He churches, he got to church everywhere, all over, you know, Orlando, Rosetta. Remember he gave his hand from, a link, a, a linked hand, he brung it. National Guard, something. He had to drop off some clothes and food. But it wasn't nobody else there. For throughout the whole scene, not the main office. Only time, that's when the police finally come, when they wanna direct the National Guards around the park on the grass, about the free office. But when it's pitch black, they didn't see that whole people there. But they got the whole home out there, ninety, uh, they had the whole home out there last night, they had the whole home out there ninety-four back there. Soon enough, they had the whole, whole home back out. The whole home come back out, and I mean, back out the grass. But when it popped out, they here. It was a ghost town. It was like they was afraid to come in and have you. But it's babies, if you had people catch going to DC, going to Maryland, or going to Virginia with their family, because their babies was getting sick. People don't know race, whole code. It was so cold that if you got to sit in the house, my children's, they slept in the living room, they all up in the living room together. I had to get, had to find a generator to sit outside their room. And that other people pray calls, and other calls, and they want the plug into the generator because of their babies. I didn't really give a care about the adults, I cared about the children. Because the adults were there for themselves. All we asked for was a little help, and only one man came, and that's bad.
Any taxpayer resident who should address City Council, you may do so at this time? Once again, any other taxpayer resident who should address City Council, you may do so at this time? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, I'm on the public hearing.
Ordnance number forty-three thirty-five, amendment bond, ordinance number forty-two eighty-two, adopted February fourteen, two thousand and twelve, providing two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars for improvements to O'Brien deals specifically to increase the amount of the bond, an additional one million, four hundred thousand dollars.
You heard the reading, ordinance number forty-three thirty-five. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three forty-three, forty-three thirty-five? Once again, is there anyone present that would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three thirty-five? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, I'm on the public hearing.
Ordnance number forty-three thirty-six, granting encroachment permit to Atlantic Environmental Consulting Services LLC in Warren, New Jersey, to install one temporary soil burn within the public right-of-way of five-o lane Broadway.
You've heard the reading, ordinance number forty-three thirty-six. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three thirty-six? Once again, you've heard the reading, ordinance number forty-three thirty-six. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three thirty-six? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, I'm on the public hearing.
Ordnance number forty-three thirty-seven, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Sydney Avenue, five-six, or Jeremie Avenue.
You've heard the reading, ordinance number forty-three thirty-seven. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three thirty-seven? Once again, you've heard the reading, ordinance number forty-three thirty-seven. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three thirty-seven? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, I'm on the public hearing.
Ordnance number forty-three thirty-eight, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Jeremy Lee Fuentes and I D R Marshall Street.
You've heard the reading, ordinance number forty-three thirty-eight. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three thirty-eight? Once again, you've heard the reading, ordinance number forty-three thirty-eight. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three thirty-eight? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, I'm on the public hearing.
Ordnance number forty-three thirty-nine, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Helen Holmes Lee, five fifty, Wall Street.
You've heard the reading, ordinance number forty-three thirty-nine. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three thirty-nine? Once again, you've heard the reading, ordinance number forty-three thirty-nine. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three thirty-nine? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, I'm on the public hearing.
Ordnance number forty-three forty, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Daniel and Rob.
President Gonzalez.
I, Your Honor's pastor, finally.
Ordinance number forty-three thirty-seven. Authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Cynthia Allen at 564 Jefferson Avenue.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three thirty-seven. What is your question?
The ordinance for both.
Move this second. I'll read comments. Sign them or call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
I, Your Honor's pastor, finally.
Ordinance number forty-three thirty-eight. Authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Jeremy Fuentes, 90 on Marshall Street.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three thirty-eight. What is your question?
The ordinance for both.
Move this second. I'll read comments. Sign them or call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
I, Your Honor's pastor, finally.
Ordinance number forty-three thirty-nine. Authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Helen Rose Mina at 54th.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three thirty-nine. What is your question?
The ordinance for both.
Move this second. I'll read comments. Sign them or call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
I, Your Honor's pastor, finally.
Ordinance number forty-three forty. Authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Daniel Ambraugh on 1051 Lafayette Street.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three forty. What is your question?
The ordinance for both.
Move this second. I'll read comments. Sign them or call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
I, Your Honor's pastor, finally.
Ordinance number forty-three forty-one. Rescind ordinance number thirty-four eighty-nine adopted January twenty-eighth, two thousand and three, which authorizes the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Laura Fernandez, one nineteen Inlee Place.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three forty-one. What is your question?
The ordinance for both.
Move this second. I'll read comments. Sign them or call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
I, Your Honor's pastor, finally.
Ordinance number forty-three forty-two. Rescind ordinance number thirty-nine sixty-nine adopted May ninth, two thousand and eight, which authorizes the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Luz Angelo Munoz, ten twenty-sixth, East Grand Street, and establish name as reserved space.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three forty-two. What is your question?
The ordinance for both.
Move this second. I'll read comments. Sign them or call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
I, Your Honor's pastor, finally.
Ordinance number forty-three forty-three. amend chapter five point eight point one hundred F and five point eight point one hundred G in code of the city of Elizabeth entitled License Transfers, Proximity to Existing License Premonies Exclusions.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three forty-three. What is your question?
The ordinance for both.
Move this second. I'll read comments. Sign them or call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
I, Your Honor's pastor, finally. Any other... Motion to suspend the rules?
So.
Move this second. Call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez. The letter is dated November thirteenth, two thousand and twelve from Chief Financial Officer requesting to extend the four and four property tax raise period to November thirty, two thousand and twelve, order to minimize and mitigate additional hardships due to Hurricane Sandy.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your question?
The resolution for both, President.
Move this second. I'll read comments.
Yes, Mr. President.
And Councilwoman.
Mr. President, I, I, I'm happy to see that they extended, uh, the tax bill for, for the, uh, President, uh, since the, um, devastating blow, Hurricane Sandy, place to find us here in the city and throughout the country. Uh, I, I, I think it's a good thing that we're doing. And also, Mr. President, uh, since Hurricane Sandy caused all the life to the region, I think it's imperative that we start to prepare ourselves in the future, uh, a little bit better than we have in the past. Meaning, uh, obviously, citizen building, uh, some housing projects that need to be equipped with backup generators, uh, also, obviously, the sustainability, uh, my commission said they need to have backup generators. Uh, and also, perhaps we might, as a whole, have some portable generators and storage so that seniors won't be left in the cold without lights all year time. Uh, whatever it takes for us to make that happen, I think we have the money. We need to start working in the future to make that, ensure that we have, it be equipped the next time we get struck by, hit by, uh, hurricane or a beast that comes through here with snowfall, uh, that will leave our residents so high. And if we do that, people that are in the, uh, open plaza would have had enough longer to have backup generators in that area for them to switch on just in case we have a struggle or something happens after the storm. And we, uh, we're a lot of shaking you up today. So, Mr. President, I, I'm happy to see that anyways, the tax, uh, bill payment, also, they, uh, probably, uh, almost getting inspected, sort of giving them better condition. And it was P S N G, the new, the new, uh, P S N G equipment, so adequate. And it can be upgraded. Uh, we've had to start learning to, uh, build, new building, uh, that way. Instead of overhead, uh, spraying lights on the street, uh, overhead downlight, we're having to go underground. So those kind of things that we started, that we started thinking about in the future, uh, moving forward to make it, so we can be better prepared than they can. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Austin. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Yes, Mr. President. President, I do agree with my colleague just stated, um, everything that you stated is appropriate at this time for us, um, as a city to begin to look at, um, other ways in terms of handling issues of, uh, natural disasters, which are going to come again and again and again because of the global warming issue that, um, we are now facing as a country and as a world. So we need to begin to really prepare before the storm. And then that when the storm hits us, and then we try to look for things to, um, help ease the stress of the storm for residents. Um, I received many phone calls all throughout the city right up until Sunday of this week, um, regarding power shortages, um, and, uh, and the like. And, you know, it was quite distressing for a lot of, uh, a lot of residents when they called P S D U G. Um, they really wasn't given any, uh, real time as to when their, um, power would be restored. Although the mayor did an excellent job in terms of his road calls and asking everyone to inform people, um, in the, in the community as, as it pertains to when P S D U G was telling them, uh, him information. But there was still such, um, a lack of last time when people restored their, their lights. And our seniors, they were left in almost two weeks without even, um, Kennedy Arms and Farley Towers, as we know, Cherry Street and, um, they were, they were down with lights and they were without any type of electricity and they did not want to leave their homes. Um, just like some of the residents of the open plaza, they were all, they were looking for places to go. Like Reverend Deere had his church open, um, right there on Fairmont Avenue. A lot of them did not want to leave their home. People do not want to leave their homes, um, for some, you know, for some reason of being detached from their homes along with losing, losing power. So it was a situation that, um, I think we need to look in the future, begin to really prepare ourselves, um, for twenty-first century issues. And that one being storms of this nature that may be more frequent than we ever seen before, um, in recorded history. So I do concur, um, with the councilman of the fifth ward that we need to, to build something. Even the resident who came up here this evening, um, offered to be a part of some type of ad hoc committee to begin to talk about some solutions. Uh, I had residents call, and we said they wanted to be a part of, you know, the emergency management team. What was that all that about? Because some people felt a real need, um, to help their neighborhoods and other people who were, you know, far more soft than they were. So there is a cry for some residents to get involved. And I think we need to, um, take a look at this as a council and perhaps as a city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
So thank you. I just want to quickly add, uh, of course, the storm was something that took all of us pretty much to surprise, the devastation that we all received. And I completely agree with all my colleagues. We all have to, uh, reevaluate our purchasing action plan of, in case anything bad happens in the future. But I, I also, actually, I wasn't able to come because I wasn't feeling well. Um, I reached out to my colleagues as well to express my dissatisfaction with P S D U G. And I think it's really important to express it here and everyone watching at home, um, on their TVs as well. I'm so grateful for everyone that came on the state, everyone that worked hard to try to put us back in power. But something that was so disturbing was I was calling all day in, every single day, calling, calling, I had some type of notification, something for the community. Um, and one of the last phone calls I made, I spoke with someone from P S D U G. And I was pushing a tape recorder because I couldn't believe what I was hearing. They pretty much, I, I was expressing my concern for the seniors, citizens especially. And I was expressing to them that some of them have hospital beds and they have back problems, they're back, um, pretty much with a bedridden and they cannot leave and it's de-flated, hurting their backs more, some of them already, you know, oxygen, so on and so forth. And I told them that it's imperative for them to make them a priority in this. And I even told them, I don't have power. It's, it's not about me or anyone else here, because I know everyone here, but anyone in the community go first. But I told them they have to be a priority. And what P S D U G said was, the shocking thing was, they previously mentioned that they don't prioritize their priorities. That's what they told me on the phone. And she knew I was a councilperson. They said, well, this thing has to be priority. She, she told me, sorry, sir, we previously almost, well, as the, go with the flow, whatever we're able to accomplish first, that's what hurts. And I didn't believe everyone. I wanted to express this with my colleagues, they were watching at home. We need to hold P S D U G accountable. They need to revisit their plans as well. Make sure seniors are prioritized also in the future. Um, so I just wanted to say, thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments?
Mr. President. I just wanted to ask, make, make one more comment and agree with the colleagues. Um, maybe we could, um, in the near future, um, ask for P S D U G representatives to come to our office to talk about these things. My, my experience being on this council for a few years is that P S D U G has been cutting their employee, um, quantity of employees as of here. And, uh, for those who have been following, uh, when a storm hit, P S D U G only had six hundred lights on working in their whole company. As a matter of fact, they were relying on nine hundred, I mean, the same amount plus half from out of state to come in and support their, their, their effort. And, you know, it may not seem like a big deal because, uh, these guys who are coming from out of state are experienced. They are well the industries of our employment system in Elizabeth. Uh, we had some streets down that all took, was a monument to call it, like, switch all street around. Um, because the people who double their certificates that caught them on the street didn't know that. Um, and I think it's, uh, it's important that P S D U G revises their labor rights. They shouldn't be letting, laying off employees, cutting back staff to such a drastic point that creates, uh, such a, uh, horrible service that they provide, allowing people to be on the front two weeks. And, uh, I mentioned this to the mayor and the commissioner, and I think we really need to bring them before us and, uh, give them some of our, our own, as the council's, and that mention. But more importantly, we should really start thinking about dedicating a certain amount of employees that are definitely needed as opposed to having them in labor forces that they don't, for the last time, actually.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman.
Yeah, Mr. President, I do agree with the sentiment of the councilman. This is exactly what we discussed at a pre-council meeting. And I was the councilman that I mentioned. I was very concerned about the senior citizens center, uh, the senior citizens units. And, and was also my idea because I received a lot of phone calls, especially from thirty-three Cherry Street, which is part of my ward. And if it wasn't for John Sobe, a very dedicated boy from the city of Elizabeth, I called him whenever it was available that my phone was working, uh, he took care of Cherry Street. I went there several times. I'd like to also say thank you to Patricia Perkins, for helping out thirty-three Cherry Street. And, uh, I did visit, uh, my people on a different building that belongs under my wards. Each ward has a pastor, so congratulations Pastor Sedanu, because you take care of your wards in a very old-fashioned way. But unfortunately, I have people that might distort the information. They might pick up whatever they want to pick up, they go the way they want to for that. I received, Mr. President, twenty-eight messages from the mayor in English, and I received twenty-eight in Spanish. So the mayor was in touch not only via email, those of us that the computer was working, and via telephone, if the phone was working. I was very lucky that a mayor in the sixth ward, the lights came back and also, they got five thirty in the morning. I thought it was an explosion. I was like, oh my God. Instead, it was my TV that came back on again. But unfortunately, Mr. President, I had no tele, after the fourth day, then they went off again, went back on again. I had no cell phone. I had no cable vision, okay? And no telephone, because I have a package. But yet, when the Peterstown area of the sixth ward was completely under dark, there were police officers coming around my ward. They'd check where the lights were moving around the neighborhood. So that would have prevented people to do destruction in the area. Because people take advantage of situations such as the sandy storm. The, before the TV that was on, we were alert that the storm was four hundred miles radius, something that we never heard before. So I think we all have to say thanks to God that nothing seriously happened in Elizabeth, the exception of trees went down, electricity went down. Most of us, we lost our food because we don't have, I don't have a generator. I was praying, God, please, it was marvelous. Stay here all, otherwise I'll flood myself. Believe me, my basement would have been probably destroyed. And, you know, I was constantly praying while I had my candles and I shared the electricity for the battery because the governor was thinking before the storm arrived, prepare yourselves, always waiting to survive to a certain number of days. But like I said, everybody worked as a team in Elizabeth and everybody should be mented. Number one, our fire department, our police department, our mayor, the lady that she spoke in Spanish, translating for Spanish-speaking people. So this is some example of that. We have to do better for the future. It might be a hundred years from now, but I will be around. But yeah, somebody, we're always going to be a councilor, mayor, they're going to remember this year. And I really, I, I thank you for all those working people and all those people that stood without electricity. I, uh, I want you to know that I spent forty-six years in Elizabeth. So somebody questioned me if I was born and he missed, the information was completely distorted by the gentleman because I was talking about somebody else that came from Pennsylvania and attacking and destroying the hidden journalism by Justin Ibergans and Councilman Rohan, what a beautiful show, our children. This is what I like to see as a positive remark. And that was my account. That was nothing personal against the gentleman that came to speak. And he constantly pointed fingers unless the mouth of the councilman. I represent the sixth ward and I'm very proud. I come to this country legally for papers, for proper documentation and evidence that I've never become public charge inside this country without the day of awards. So thanks to America, which is the land of opportunity, my great, great parents were there before I came. And they contributed to this country a great deal and I'm very proud of my grandparents, my grandfather, my father, mother, me, every responsible person. That's why whatever's right has to come out. You can't just keep it inside and keep quiet. And I'm the one of the councilmen that I keep fighting for. Everybody knows what is my reward of Sedanu's ward, of many of us' ward, of Mr. Keenan's ward. We are here to protect our people the best way that we can. But the sort of people have a political agenda and their agenda is to get information and make it use for themselves so they could do whatever they want to do or try to restore the information. And as the councilman president mentioned before, we're going to have a person who's going to answer this question. Councilman, where the idea came from to point somebody?
Came from this body.
This body yourself. Do you remember the pickup meeting I mentioned to all of us that we should be fair to hire somebody even from the publicity department or from the water department or even get an attorney? So I want you to make sure that information is do what is due. Again, people, they understand whatever they want to understand. And my supreme men of all says, Father, forgive those people that don't understand what I'm saying. Thank you, Mr. President.
And Councilman? Uh, any other comments?
Okay, I, I just like to add, I know it's Monday, Monday, maybe two weeks, uh, Hurricane Sandy, uh, you know, came to, uh, to meet us and, and destroyed, you know, so many places, so many homes, the lives, disrupted the lives of so many families. I understand it's the worst natural disaster in, in the state of New Jersey and it's the second thing into Katrina. Uh, and we all remember those memories of what happened in New Orleans and that, uh, you know, we remember Katrina very well. When, when Hurricane Sandy, uh, hit us, the aftermath was, we were close to a hundred percent of our power here in the city of Elizabeth, which, you know, was amazing to me. You know, it slowly came back on. There were, uh, conferences being held with, uh, public circus. There were open conference with public officials. I know the mayor was on that conference. I used to be on that conference myself within a time also advocating, you know, nothing from my board for the entire city. Advocating for the Kennedy Arms, for the Farley Towers, for the open plaza, the mayor doing the same thing. You know, letting them know these are the areas that we need to come out and help. You know, and public service being pulled by all the municipal authorities. Because everybody wanted them to be there to go there first. And then also we had the governor tell them, okay, well, you know, you need to pull your resources over here. So I know it was not, I know it was difficult for everybody involved, uh, with that. And as the councilman Mazin mentioned, the mayor, he did the best he could to communicate to people. You know, whether it was my phone, whether it was my mixo, um, whether it was an email or a text message or whatever, to let people know, update people what was going on in the city as best, as best as he could. He even started a non petition for those who are not aware called Five Off Credit On. An initiative that he started on Facebook. That what, what would happen is, is if you're let to prison for five days, then the company should credit you a monthly service. You know, this is the initiative that he has started because of what happened as a result of Katrina, as a result of Sandy. And he's hoping that the governor and the legislature, you know, look at that. And, and I encourage anybody that can to go on and to sign off on that petition, that initiative, you know, that the mayor has to govern. Because we would like to see that, you know, the folks when we have these type of events taking place and utility companies are slow to respond, well, then they should be a consequence, you know, as a result of that. Right now, there isn't a consequence, you know? Um, right now, we should be, from what I understand, around a hundred percent power of our public service and I want the public, again, who may be listening, to know that they're continuing to work. They made some temporary fixes in some parts of our city. They're going to be going back out to make temporary, to make permanent fixes that need to be made. So that means they may put out a power again in certain areas for a few hours. So just be mindful of that. But if it does go out, please, don't forget, call the whole company, the public service, one eight hundred four three six seven seven three four, so most residents know that number by now. Uh, call them, let them know that, you know, you're out of power. Uh, so this way, in case it's not them doing the work, it's something else that's wrong, you know, they can follow up with it. And, and as I was mentioning, with, with the city of Elizabeth, I want to thank everyone, the residents in particular, for their patience, for their understanding. You know, and all those that came, you know, from the emergency responders that came from, from the city, from the fire department, to the police department, uh, the public works department, our tree department in particular was very busy out there. Helping remove some layer of trees from, from roads and homes and, and things of that nature. There's still busy now, clearing out some of the parks, but many of our areas in the city were devastated as a result of Hurricane Sandy as well. So I want to thank, and I can't thank them enough, and also all the other states. I believe about twenty-six states in total, uh, came to aid in New Jersey. Even the state police of Louisiana came out, you know, to help some of the shore areas, not Elizabeth, but they came out to help the shore, to help them far their, their property and their personal possession. So I give thanks, you know, we're one nation united and that's what we always should be. You know, looking out for each other's back and helping each other out in a time of need.
Any other comments? Sign them or call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
I, the resolution. We will now move on to the resolutions.
Authorize the same for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen municipal budget by title. Adopt the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen municipal budget in the amount of two hundred sixteen thousand, million, eight hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars, seventy cents. Fiscal year two thousand and thirteen super utility budget in the amount of nineteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. And the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen capital budget in the amount of thirty-four million, eight hundred fifty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars. Authorize the amendment to fiscal year two thousand and thirteen capital budget in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading of the resolutions. What is your question?
Move the resolution for both, President.
Move this second. I'll read comments. Sign them or call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanu.
Nay to the budgets. I surrender. I'm nay to municipal store utility and capital budget for the second one, uh, by I to three hundred thousand capital budget.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazin.
Nay, and then yes, the last one for the capital budget.
President Gonzalez.
I, the resolution's passed.
In compliance with the state fiscal year two thousand and thirteen appropriations act, city council has reviewed the city's quarter reviewed the city's quarterly budget revenues and appropriations. Request permission from the Director of Public Government Services for dedication by Roger to the fiscal year 2013 budget for donations, acceptance of requests and gifts from Clark State Bank, and others to support Thanksgiving traditions. Authorize the office of officials to execute all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation Highway Safety Fund grant program fiscal year 2012 in conjunction with federal forfeiture funds to purchase four new police motorcycles in an amount not to exceed $34,623.30. Authorize the board contract to Hitley Bogosian, U and New Jersey for the furnishing and postage, equipment, maintenance, and supplies, and of course not to exceed $225,000 for a period through October 1st, 2012 through September 30, 2013. Authorize the board contract to International Salt of the LLC, Cork Summit, Pennsylvania for the purchasing of bulk rock salt for the Department of Public Works under the Union County Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the period of October 22nd, 2012 through October 21st, 2013, and of course not to exceed $353,000. Authorize the board contract to run these water truck parts LLC Division of Capital Supply in Bay Harbor, Jersey for the purchase of water bottles and accessories for the Department of Public Works for the period of October 25th, 2012 through November 25th, 2012, was not to exceed $50,000.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, what is your question?
Move the resolution through both the president.
Move the second, are there any comments?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Mr. President usually had a criticized feeling for both the way they voted. But this evening, Mr. President, I really, 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 really bother you. Here we just had, quite the old city councilman talk about Hurricane Sandy, and that's very close to what I said. And had two councilmen here, would not agree to amend the budget, capital budget. And we want to buy back the generators, and we want to buy more generators. Here we got, they, they sat here, they sat here literally, talking about how much they feel about community, about residents. And they have a destiny, the city, and they're trying to give the capital budget, and if you got to buy these water generators, you got to buy back a generator for our citizens, 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 building. And they have the essence, they have the concern about our citizens. I can't believe this, I can't believe this. But they're still here, and, and, and now, I, I, I won't approve the capital budget, I won't approve it, but listen, but they're terribly, that same budget, didn't go much more, that they go so concerned about our citizens, citizens here in Elizabeth. Mr. President, some wrong there, there's a difference. Some wrong there, there's a wrong there. If they're wrong, they're, they're, my board of directors, here's one for president. Flip flop back and forth, if they flip flop back and forth, I'm hurt, that's it. Here we are, trying to pass a budget, and perhaps we might have to lie, and I hate to repeat myself. And they sat here in Elizabeth, that they're concerned about citizens here in Elizabeth. But as soon as we pass the budget, we passed it, and go out, buy those generators, put them in their place, and then they are war, a terrible war. And if your first one stays just out, you don't win, and yet so much. I didn't vote for you, as technology, but you're not criticized. But here we are, just out here, a tempest storm, and I'm sitting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President, just to answer my question, my colleague, not all the time people have to agree in how we vote, especially in the situation that we discussed this evening. We are planning for the future. We definitely, we do not expect another storm to arrive next week or next month. They said that this type of storm that Sandy was will happen every 100 years. I might believe it.
You know that, Mr. President, councilman.
I think not at the bottom, Mr. Councilman. You go get the budget, see whatever you want to reduce, maybe eliminate something, and you didn't get a chance to review your budget, and then you could put the generators, it could work that way. You're entitled to vote the way you want to vote, I'm entitled to vote the way I have to vote. Guess what? I had a one watch meeting on my board, and I mentioned, I said, you know, I texted Michael up a little bit, what do you mean a little bit? A couple hundred dollars, maybe even less than that. How do you expect me to vote? They told me to vote no, and that's why I'm voting now, listen to my people now. In many of the previous years, I took a lot of races and took it in favor of the budget. So your prerogative is to vote yes. I could not, because I like to listen to the people that I met in my board. Just the same thing, you choose one president, somebody else chooses another president. It's a choice, it's what's to be about America, Mr. Council. I have nothing against you. If I give my words, I'm going to vote for you, and you give your words, you're going to vote for me, then you don't vote. Guess what? What kind of words do you have? Mr. President, the way I vote, I stand very strongly. Enough is enough, taxes are going up every year, and you see the citizens, Elizabeth is made up of honest citizens, that's enough. For no one discount, never vote in favor of a budget if I see any agrees. So think about it, councilman. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. President, Councilman Smith.
I personally just want you to know, councilman, for attacking me and my colleague, pretty much assuming or stating the reasons why I vote against the budget. I believe that the residents of the fourth ward in the city, and many other people who live in Elizabeth, they know my heart, they know my desires, they know that I really care about them, and to accuse me or my colleague of not caring about the citizens of the city of Elizabeth, I take that very respectfully. Personally, I forgive you, I'm not going to hold it against you, you're entitled to say whatever you choose. But I know that the fourth ward, just like my colleague said, they're really concerned about the taxes in the city, and usually when it comes to this, I also, you know, I realize that I must do the decision and the vote, so usually it's very respectfully done. Whatever we decide, that's where it stays. Stay at due time to speed, just because of what you said, the reason I vote against the budget is because of the taxes. I feel so burdened of taxes, the residents in City Elizabeth, it's very heavy, people losing their homes, a lot of people have left the city, and there's a lot of struggle that occurs. If I was to stay a specific line item on generators, if you ever leave, I would be the first person to vote for that, and to be supportive of that. But I'll leave us that, I'm not here to make this into any political thing, any way, shape, or form, I just feel so in character for tax, and I completely have to speak to defend, but I know my decision, the reason I did it is because the residents that I have, pretty much, that liked it to be here, to vote in, in the way that they feel is though is necessary. So those are my comments, and I personally am saddened that someone would choose to use this moment to try to make, you know, try to attack their colleagues, so thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman, councilman.
Mr. President, certainly, certainly those of us who have been to know our colleagues over the years, who now argue that they thought here, I certainly now, who now, we never say that about my colleagues on the right wing, or the councilman on the sixth ward, I would never say that. I had witnessed firsthand, for example, Councilman St. Peter's concern for his residents. But I don't think that's, that's the point, and I really, people should not be attacked for the way they vote. I don't think that's, I, I, I don't like the enemy. But I would think, I think it's a bigger picture. I think the higher government considers the budget, which is one of the most important things that we vote upon, I think it's important for our allies. You know, we have not treated too many recommendations, too many cuts, to reduce this, to reduce that, and unfortunately, I was here, the recommendations for my colleagues to vote against the budget here and there. So that's the only point that I would make, of course, however, I don't know, but I would be more encouraged if I heard recommendations, certain recommendations, so where should I vote? I don't hear them. And then the point, I think that, uh, Councilman Smith, for fame, maybe this is a bigger point. One of our, the other pros, to be able to provide services, whether it be police or fire, or generators, as the councilman suggested, we need to appropriate funds. We need to appropriate funds, and if you say no to the budget, we're crazy, we're not going to vote. So that's the only part that I, that I acknowledge strongly, and I would also remind my colleagues that by statute, in New Jersey, we don't have to vote in favor of a budget that presented by administration, but we must adopt a budget. And if you're trying to correct it, if I'm wrong, we must adopt a budget by statute. So if we must do that by a certain time, if we will agree with you, we have ample opportunities and recommendations, and to try to persuade the rest of the elected council, the votes recommendations are not bad, and we should listen to them. So thanks for your picture. Money is supposed to be appropriated in order for also the right services. If you go no, and require no, no recommendations, then it doesn't make sense. That's all I have to say, thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, any councilman that hasn't had a comment that would like to add a comment? Councilwoman Perkins-Gustafson.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I would agree with Councilwoman Wester. We are duly elected to legislate, appropriate, and investigate matters for the city. And in appropriate funds, we have to do that through a budget. It's up to us, once the administration give us the budget to go through it, if we need to make recommendations or making changes, we should do that. We should really take the budget process as a serious tool to do the work that we've been elected to do. On the same hand, I don't think we should admonish one another in public when we vote our conscience, that's our God-given right to serve the people that elected us. So, you know, it's a big picture that we're looking at. Yes, we should look into the budget, but no one should ever have to admonish another councilperson for the way they voted, especially in public. I think this body has much more character than that, and I think we should continue to conduct ourselves in a manner that of high character, or we, you know, went out. So just as a comment, our jobs are to legislate, appropriate funds, and to investigate issues of matters and protect the city. And we really should take the budget process seriously. We should go talk to our CFO and see if changes can be made. And if it's simply a matter of raising taxes, then there's really nothing can be done. If that's the will of the people in their boards, then that's the will that they follow. So that's all I have to say, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman, any other comments? Councilmen that have not commented. Sing on, local.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gustafson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brolin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazen.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, our resolution's passed.
Authorize the board contract to so pay received KBF Auto Body Elizabeth for the furnishing and repairs and painting of city vehicles for the police department in the amount of A shared services agreement for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuels with the county of Union with no fee to join. Authorization for barriers admitted to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to require citizen participation in the Landfill Community Development Block Grant Emergency Solutions Rant and Home Program. Amendment resolution dated October 23rd, 2012, with the American Red Cross to provide community development block grant funds to purchase a trailer to assist during disaster need and for repairs and handling, specifically to correct the description of the scope of services as follows: to provide temporary shelter to residents who are victims of disasters; establish needs for the boarding of properties listed on schedule A on file in the city clerk's office in the total amount of $2,751.90; establish needs for the removal and disposal of debris on properties listed on schedule A on file in the city clerk's office in the total amount of $7,895.32. Authorize approval of contract amendment number two for the contractor to cover LLC in connection with sewer rights and assessments at original cost of $30,000 to provide further additional services regarding the sewer rights and assessments dispute at an additional cost not to exceed $40,000, which combined with previous contract amendment raises the contract to $95,000. Authorize the board contract to Birdsall Service Group in Grand River, New Jersey to provide environmental engineering services in connection with the fire department home renovation project at a cost not to exceed $62,310 plus moving vertical. Authorize the board of contract to Hatch Mount McDonald and Burger and Beer Zoo to provide civil engineering design services in connection with the lower roof of Division Street under the CSX Railroad Bridge feasibility study at a cost not to exceed $83,000 paid utilities.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, what is your question?
Move the resolution through both the president.
Move the second, are there any comments? Sing on, local.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gustafson.
No one to change or add anything else.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brolin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazen.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, our resolution's passed.
Commendations, we have Joe Mantow retired from the Elizabeth Public Library, and the Elizabeth Packers who were here with us to see. Are there any other commendations? Memorials, we have Judge James G. Murphy, the husband of Deputy City Clerk Mary Murphy, Maria de Carmen Leon, Zoe Anne Patton, Joseph Keenan, the father of Councilwoman Keenan, Lola Pillow, the mother of former City Clerk Anthony Pillow, Angelina McCollough, and Salatola Disessary. Any other memorials?
Yes, employee Mrs. Marla Turner.
Ms. Turner.
Marla Turner.
Any other memorials? Councilman Keenan.
I just want to express the happy life of the appreciation of the donations expressed by council on passing of the law.
Councilman. Okay, let's ask for a moment of silence.
What's your question?